All right, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, January 15, 2021. Here we are live in person, so we're doing a hybrid model today. So please bear with us if we have technical difficulties. Just for the record, we have Ms. Wellman and Mr. Mackey participating remotely for this meeting. And just give us a thumbs up. Can you hear? I know Ms. Wellman and Mr. Mackey, can you hear? Perfect. How about Mr. Mackey? It only took 30 seconds for the first technical difficulties, but we'll get there.
I can hear you just fine.
Okay. Let's just give it 30 seconds or a minute, because I know Mr. Mackey's on. And our crack staff, I'm sure Brian and Jason will figure it out in no time. In the meantime, since we're live in person, I'd like to transition and salute the flag with Mr. Johnson, if he would, to lead the effort.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Feels so good. Okay, and just one more, just a quick check for Mr. Mackey for audio. All right.
Yeah, I didn't think he was.
Okay. So why don't we proceed? And I know you guys collectively will figure it out. Sound like a plan? Okay, awesome. Okay. With that being said, why don't we jump into our scheduled items, which is the presentation for the National Grid Ready Path Project.
Mr. Chairman, we have some representatives from National Grid here with us today. I'm not sure who's going to do the presenting, but whoever wants to come to the front. Yeah, that's fine. However you want to do it. Just introduce your team.
Sit right there.
Sit right there, yeah.
Hi, my name is.
You can, yeah. You can sit down.
He wanted to hear you at home.
Take your time and relax. Yeah, we have the residents watching. And Mrs. Howard, are we going to have a presentation? Okay, wonderful.
Do you want to introduce who's with you tonight?
Sure. Good evening. My name is David Barron. I'm National Grid's project manager for the project that's before the town here. We appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk to you about the project. I have a few members of the team here with me. So we'll go through a brief PowerPoint, describe the background of the project, some of the permitting and community engagement activities that we have underway, and take any questions.
Excellent. Wonderful. Sounds like a plan.
So the overall project is called the Ready Path Solution. It's a combination of several projects. There's one element that's located and proposed in Tewksbury. We can go to the next slide.
Another technical difficulty.
Exactly. There we go.
So just some background on the project. This overall effort was born out of an announcement by the Mystic Generating Station, which is a large fossil-fueled generating station in Everett. They announced that in 2024, they're retiring from the system. And that led the Independent System Operator, ISO New England for short. ISO New England is the entity that has the overall responsibility for the planning and sort of administration of the bulk power network, so the high-voltage bulk power network across all of New England. When the generating station announced they were retiring, ISO studied that and said, what happens with the bulk power network when that large generator goes away? Is it still reliable? And after some study, they identified that once the generator retires, there would be reliability problems potentially with the network. So they issued what's known as a competitive RFP. It was the first of its kind in New England under certain FERC rules, but ISO issued a request for proposal essentially to solve those reliability exposures that would take place after the generator retires. If you think about a generator, it's a large sort of spinning machine, and it gives a certain inertia to the system. So if there's a problem and the operators are trying to restore the network or control the voltage, that large spinning machine sort of gives stability to the network. Once that goes away and the generator retires, that's really the issue that ISO was trying to solve with this RFP. So National Grid and EverSource, as the incumbent transmission operators in the area, we put bids in to the RFP. Six other entities put bids in to the RFP, you know, transmission developers from essentially across the country. In total, ISO got 36 bids from eight different developers. And at the end of the day, they went through an analysis and selected this project that we're here talking about tonight. So that's sort of the background. It's really aimed at curing reliability issues for the bulk power system.
Is Ready Path, David, like a joint venture between EverSource and the grid?
Yeah, it's a joint project. So National Grid is developing the element in Tewksbury here. We also have some work at a substation in Amesbury and Havrell, very small, minor work. And then EverSource has an element to do at their North Cambridge substation. So I think it's actually shown on the next slide. You can see the two green boxes labeled control system upgrades. Those are just some minor, it's really sort of relay and protection upgrades at National Grid's substations in Havrell and Amesbury. You see the block that's labeled stability improvements. That's what we're doing here in Tewksbury. And then EverSource has to install some what's known as series reactors at their substation in North Cambridge. Those elements all together are the Ready Path. We've sort of branded it as the Ready Path Solution. We can go to the next slide. Just stop me anytime if you have any questions. But what you're seeing on the aerial here is the existing substation, Tewksbury 228, down the road here off, you know, Old Boston Road, Route 38. And you can see the area outlined in red is a slight expansion of the existing substation yard to the southeast where we're going to install the proposed equipment. And Lee will talk a little bit more in detail about some of the permitting. If you go to the next slide, what we're really talking about installing at Tewksbury is called, for short, it's a STATCOM, and it's a static synchronous compensator. I'm a civil engineer, so I get quickly over my head with some of the electrical stuff, but essentially, it's power electronics that would take the place of the generator in their ability to control the voltage of the bulk power system. It's things like thyristers and capacitors and different power electronics and a cooling system that, at the end of the day, are used to control voltage essentially. You can go to the next slide. A little bit more detail here on that expansion area. So to the left, sort of grayed out, you see the existing substation yard. And what's sort of folded in the center is the expanded area of the substation. So it's a building will house the power electronics. You see that STATCOM building. You see some reactors. We have a transformer that transforms the voltage from 345 kV, 345,000 volts, to about 38,000 volts. There's a cooling system, and, you know, there's a perimeter access road and some grading and drainage improvements. But a fairly small expansion of the yard. And if you're familiar with the site, that's a very large parcel of land that the company has there. It's over 60 acres, I believe. We can go to the next slide. So this is just the timeline that we're aiming for. We're hoping to start construction late summer, August timeframe. If I can trouble you to go actually back to the aerial photo. The first thing that we're going to do, you see the line with the yellow dots? That's a low-voltage distribution line that sort of runs straight across the area that we're expanding. So you can see, the first thing we're going to do is relocate that and put that little dog leg in it around the expansion area. So that's really the first activity that'll take place. We're hoping to start that in August of this year. And then in September, sort of start the grading work associated with that expansion area. You can go back. Thank you for that. We're hoping to wrap the construction up and have the facility in service first quarter And I think that's probably, we have done some initial outreach. I won't read the slide to you, but we've been communicating regularly. Danielle Oretz is from our stakeholder team. So we've been having outreach and talking not only with the town departments, but also when we went out there and did some geotechnical work and some survey work, we did some door-to-door outreach with abutters sort of around the site. So that's sort of the high-level sort of wave tops of what we're proposing. Want to go to the next slide? Lee Curtis with BSC Group will talk about the permitting.
I'm a wetland and environmental scientist, but I have been facilitating the permitting for all the permits for this project with this team. This project, primarily due to the expansion of the station, will require an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, a modification to the existing site plan special permit, and a land disturbance permit. The Conservation Commission did review the project on May 26. We have already obtained the draft conditions. There were no major concerns. We did a site visit with the conservation agent. We staked a couple of trees that were in the 25-foot no disturb, and I believe we will be granted a waiver to remove those, to shift the access road outside the expanded station so they can access the transmission lines. The site plan approval special permit was reviewed by the planning board last night. Again, no major concerns or comments for both of those, the commission and the board. We are waiting for the town engineers' review of the stormwater. So at this point, once we get those comments back, BSC's engineers are going to incorporate those in the plans and provide those back to the Conservation Commission and the planning board. And the next hearings we expect to present at are July 14 and July 19. So in theory, we should be able to have our permit in time for the work to begin in August. We did participate in the interdepartmental meeting on June 1. And I know that this team has been keeping the town manager and folks involved in the progress as well. So if there are any questions on the permitting, I can certainly answer those. And after that, I think the major component of this presentation is talking about National Grid's commitment and the community outreach to date. Danielle, I don't know if you want to tag team in here.
Excuse me. Could you just provide me your name so that we have it for the record?
Lee Curtis.
Lee Curtis.
BSC Group.
And Danielle?
Danielle Oretz with National Grid.
Thank you.
So a couple of the things that we've done initially is we did have meetings with Mr. Montori to kind of let him know about the project when we were first rolling out. This project does have a dedicated website. It has a dedicated hotline and email address. We have been sending out notices to the residents. I think you can go off to the next slide. We'll actually show you the hotline and website. As we've been in COVID, we've always been making sure that we're doing the right thing. So when we do do door-to-door, it's been mostly literature drops. However, any calls that we get in our emails, we've been, you know, quite responsive to those. Most of it's just curiosity at this point. Regular two-way, I know you've been talking to Sean. Sean keeps you pretty well updated on everything. So the next thing that will probably kick off is, as we get closer towards construction, we'll have a newsletter that people can opt into. And, you know, one of the things that we like to do is work with the town, and if there's a way we can share that, you know, on your town website where we just kind of, we did this for MVRP.
Yes.
So, you know, if there's ways that we can share with the town, if we provide you guys a PDF or something, you know, or a link, that's always very helpful. So we just look forward to continuing the good relationship with our transmission projects. And I think on the last slide is the contact information. So there you go.
There it is.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Why don't we open up the board for questions or comments? So let's test this out. How about we go to Ms. Wellman, who's remote?
Good evening. Hello from Cape. Can you hear me?
Perfect. Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming tonight. I'll keep my questions short. I wanted to know if there were any environmental impacts that you found at the site, any wildlife or ecology that would be impacted by the project? I know that's handled through the Conservation Commission, but I'd like to hear it from you folks. And I wanted to know, I know that you're upgrading just the transmission system. I wanted to know a little bit more about the design of the system you have there. I was curious what the reactors are doing, and if you could tell me if there's discharge from the cooling center. Those are my questions. Thank you.
I can start with the wetland and wildlife impacts while Dave's moving in here. The majority of the work, and you can take reference or look at the aerial photo, the majority of the work for the expansion, we did try very hard to stick with an existing disturbed footprint on the site. The substation expansion is moving out to an area that National Grid has already been using to park equipment and for the existing transmission line access road. So at this point, there was no, we have no direct wetland impacts. We are in the buffer zone. The station, the current existing station is in the buffer zone. The transmission line access road will be shifted out. So the station will be on top of the existing access road, the existing parking areas and the grass lawn areas where they stored equipment. So the majority of the station is an existing disturbed area that did not have any existing wetlands or any major or significant wildlife value. The transmission line access road and the distribution line components are also kept very tight to the station expansion because the wetland is adjacent, and so is the buffer zone. And we did maximize as best we could to squeeze all of those components in. We had the transmission line access road and the distribution poles, which all have clearances as does the substation. So there wasn't a lot of wiggle room there and the new stormwater components as well. So we did our best to keep all of those out of the 50-foot zone, but we do have a couple of trees that are coming out within the 25-foot. And the access road will be in the 50-foot, but the station expansion itself is just within the 100-foot buffer zone, and it is an existing disturbed site. Does that help answer the question?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Do I have my back to her? Or can she?
No, I can see you. The camera.
It is strange, but the microphone's here, so.
Might have to try a longer cord next time. We'll just string it up behind here, the stage, so.
Like one of those spinning counter.
Right. Ms. Wellman, anything else on your end?
Well, she had a couple of questions on.
Okay, yeah, okay, please, please.
Yeah, so the reactor is, I guess maybe it's a scary sounding name. Maybe you think nuclear reactor or something, but it's really just a piece of electrical equipment. It's a winding, and it's used to control power flow. So it's a way to sort of control the flow of power. It's a piece of outdoor. It'll look like any other sort of substation equipment to the untrained eye. And actually, that has a fence around it, so while that equipment is energized, no one can enter into proximity. A fence within the actual substation yard. So it's really a piece of substation equipment. The cooling system is largely housed in a building, so the pipes and valves. Outside, there is a radiator and fan system, and it's really just those power electronics that I was describing do generate a lot of heat. And it's really just aimed at cooling the electrical equipment in that building. Does that answer your question?
Yep, that's great. I can see the camera I'm looking at is looking right at your table, so you're great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Remember, everyone gets two mulligans tonight because it's the hybrid, so you're good.
Like that little person on your shoulder.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Wellman. How about Mr. Mackey? Why don't we stay remote, and then we'll bounce it to the board. How about Mr. Mackey? Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions at this time.
Okay, very good. How about Ms. Dronik?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for explaining that in a way that I could understand it, so I very much appreciate that. And obviously, this is something that's needed because we have to do this. If the other thing goes away, we're going to be in big trouble. What I would like to know with the outreach, how many residents are you considering abutters or are you going outside? Because when you look at the aerial, it doesn't look like there's anybody really in play. So how many abutters have you been speaking with or dropping leaflets at?
So. So technically, there's, the standard is usually about 100 feet, or sometimes from a substation, 500 feet. What we do is, for this specific project, we took a look at an aerial shot, and we said, okay, there doesn't look like there's a lot of people, but there's a little neighborhood over here, and there's a little neighborhood over there. So we expanded it to make sure that we included anyone that kind of lived around there and, you know, would be seeing the trucks coming through. And that's one of the things that we've paid attention to when we're doing the outreach is it's not just the direct abutters, but a lot of times, it could be people living along the area that are going to be impacted by, you know, equipment trucks or just, you know, the noise or, you know, seeing piece of like geotechnical boring equipment, which I've learned is not a little shovel and a, it's a big piece of equipment. So, you know, these are all things that people get curious about or might just say, what is that? So we have been doing that. I don't know off the top of my head how many people are on that abutters list, but I can go back and look at it.
That's terrific. I really appreciate that you've expanded it. Quite often times, we get ourselves into a little trouble when we talk about abutters because there's direct abutters, there's people who believe there are abutters. So just talking about those two neighborhoods that we see on the aerial is really helpful for me to know who that you're speaking with. So I appreciate that you're going above and beyond to make sure people understand.
Sometimes if it says 500 feet, you have two houses next to each other, and it's like, do I mail this person and not their neighbor?
Yeah.
So no, we just, we take a little bit more of a holistic approach.
Yeah, and I really like the call center line on top of the email, so I think that's very helpful. So thank you for that work, but I have no questions.
All right, very good. How about Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick questions. The first is, do you have any idea what the value of the estimated improvements are or estimated value of the improvements would be?
The project in Tewksbury.
Dave, want to just grab them? Thank you for the residence. Thank you very much.
Just curious. The Tewksbury component, too.
Yeah, the Tewksbury component is around $27 million.
Is that right? Okay, so that's pretty significant.
Yeah.
And that leads me to my second question. And it looked like your timeline or this project, really, the genesis of it commenced before the COVID pandemic. So my question, you mentioned in your comments that everything goes right. You're about eight months before the mothballing of the other facility. How has COVID impacted the project? I know there's, in other industries, there's difficulty getting supplies right now and, you know, critical equipment. What do you see relative to the timeline? And do you have the bandwidth in light of COVID to, you know, meet that eight-month target?
Yeah, so we're actually, like I mentioned, hoping to start early construction this fall. And that'll be the site grading, sort of the rough grading. And then we're actually likely to take a short break over the winter and then come back in March to start concrete work for foundations rather than do that during the winter. So, you know, sort of indirectly, I guess I'm saying, if push comes to shove, we have some float in that schedule, and we wouldn't take the winter off if that were the case. But yeah, the supply chain has been verified. A lot of the equipment is coming from Siemens in Germany. We're meeting with them weekly, and, you know, everything's really on track. So we feel confident about that. And, you know, to ISO New England's credit, they actually administered that RFP, which was pretty complex during sort of the height of COVID. So kudos to them as well for keeping the overall thing, RFP, on track.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good. That's good to know. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Just a couple of quick ones. You mentioned about construction impact, and it seems like soft maybe sitting up here, but when we have projects of any magnitude, it sounds pretty like light right now. But what type, like just in layman's terms, you talk about construction impact, what could the residents expect? You know, loud booms, heavy construction, or literally just trucks moving in and out? Again, just in layman's terms for the residents, you know, that could be impacted?
Yeah, I would say, I think probably the noisiest sort of bit of work would be the civil, so the excavation, you know, excavating to dig foundations to install, you know, install foundations that will support equipment. And the building foundation, once that's up, a lot of the work is actually inside the building, so you won't hear a lot of noise. I think it would largely be, as Danielle described, construction traffic in and out of the substation. But we don't, and again, it's a very large parcel, 60-plus acres, so we don't expect any real significant impacts to neighbors.
Okay, cool. Fair enough. Risk mitigation, risk mitigation. I don't want to be crazy and say this sky is falling, but, you know, what happens if it's constructed, you know, there is, there's issues with, I'm going to call it a plant because I'm not technical in this industry, but have you ever had problems with a plant or like with a light generator in a community?
I'm not sure I understood the question. A light?
No, a light, like, if there's any significant impacts to the plant, obviously it would impact Tewksbury. God forbid something went wrong. You know what I mean? So I'm asking about, based on what you're installing.
Yep.
Has it ever gone south in a very bad way in any other community?
Oh, no, no, no. So it's very sort of intricate and expensive equipment, and sort of built into that our control and protection system. So as soon as there's any sort of a fault detected or a blip, the thing trips offline, it protects itself. So yeah, it'll de-energize, and if that's sort of what you're getting at.
Exactly, yep, that's all. You know, that's, okay.
The device that we're installing, again, is called a STATCOM. It's intended, its primary purpose from ISO's perspective is to be able to restore the system after a blackout event, a large blackout event. But it'll also be running 24/7 and sort of regulating voltages. So it'll be running, and it monitors the system. It looks at system voltages, frequencies, and all that. And if there's any problem, it trips itself off and protects itself essentially.
Fair enough. I know that was the greatest question. Last but not least, because Tewksbury, we're the lucky ones, how about additional revenues? I'd be foolish not to ask the question, but how about additional revenues to our community in lieu of using, you know, Tewksbury as the special site?
So.
Do you want to just grab that microphone, Danielle?
So I believe in previous transmission projects that we've had here in Tewksbury, the most recent one being the Merrimack Valley Reliability Project, one of the things that we did provide was tax revenue information. So how much we pay in taxes, and then with that new line and service, how much additional tax the town would be receiving. So we can do the same thing with Ready Path where we can provide that information. I just have to get it from our tax people.
Okay. So outside of taxes, it's not additional revenue stream in lieu of the new facility?
No, and I assume that's why Mr. Johnson was asking about the.
No, and I assume that's why Mr. Johnson was asking about the valley with the project. Yeah, it would be essentially taxable real property.
This, this board is good at asking those type of questions for additional revenue. And you, and National Grid has very good partners with us, you know, in the town and, and, you know, with revenue streams and taxes. So again, but we have to ask the tough questions, so.
You wouldn't be doing your job if you didn't ask.
Right. So I think, I think that's good on our end. So Mr. Montori, I don't, I don't know if a vote is in line. I think the planning board, obviously additional boards might be in line, but I think this is kind of more of awareness and advertising and socializing for the residents what's coming up, correct?
No votes needed. It was just a informational.
Okay, very good. So, so Lee, Daniel, and Dave, thank you very, very much. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Stronach?
My just, my questions for the town manager, and we're going to be able to put that information on how residents can get that on our website?
We'll put this on the website.
Okay, great.
Okay, very good. Thanks again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next order of business is the local housing partnership scope of services for consultant, for a consultant. Hey, good evening. And just, and just name, just name please for the record, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's great to see you all and to be here, of course. It's been a long time. Yes, Nancy Reed, Chair of the Local Housing Partnership. Thank you for putting me on the agenda, Mr. Chairman. I, I assume you have the letter and some of the enclosures. It's been a long process. We've been discussing some next steps for the committee and some thoughts about the town and affordable housing and the use of the trust fund. We've been in dialogue with town manager, assistant town manager, and I'm really appreciative as well to the committee who stayed engaged throughout the whole COVID pandemic. And I also wanted to thank our selectmen rep, Ms. Stronach. One of the nights, the committee was saying they were so happy to have a selectmen rep that really stood behind us, because it's been a long time since we had that.
She's a fighter.
So, and thanks really, that I can't say enough. So on to the item at hand. After much discussion and research, we decided to put together a scope of services for someone to help out the town. And not just the committee, but could be any committee that needs assistance in regard to affordable housing. With some of the items on the scope of services, I don't know that I, I want to go through it all.
Maybe just a very, maybe just touch upon, just high-level bullets, I guess, for the residents?
Yeah, we're looking to have someone that can do some of the heavy lifting on the paperwork, dealing and coordinating with Department of Housing and Community Development, known as DHCD. As you know, they are involved in all types of affordable housing. Different things need to be approved, all paperwork, D riders, sites, everything, the market plan for the rents, the market plan for who's going to get the units. Everything has to be approved by DHCD. And so it becomes, you know, a heavy load for town staff to take on if we decide we need to do something. And also would help out if certain developers or boards or committees have questions about the process for affordable housing, which can be detailed and intricate. It would give them a resource, a third party, someone available to kind of walk them through a process, just focusing on affordable housing. And so that's why we're here. We thought it would be a good thing to have. And to start us off, we would ask for a set aside of 30,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
And just for the residents, Ms. Reed, that comes out of the, that comes out of the budget that's already allocated, some like to call the in lieu of fee? And what's the total?
It's a combination. It could be, it's the fee in lieu of unit pool of funds. And it could be also there's some community preservation money in there as well.
You know the total by chance, the total amount in there? Just roughly?
I believe it's over $5 million.
No, the $5 million. Okay, very good. Okay.
And so we, what we want to do is also have someone that can assist us. We have an eye for actually trying to leverage the funds rather than just spend them. We want to, you know, try to get a grant or tax credits or partnering with a nonprofit, et cetera, to leverage those monies.
Okay.
It's been our practice to get more than one unit for fee. We have, you know, a record is almost like up to eight to one, almost type of thing. So we, we want to leverage the money so that it does a lot for the town.
Okay. All right, very good. If, if nothing else on your side, Ms. Reed, let's open up to the board for questions or comments. Why don't we just use the same batting order here? So how about Ms. Wellman? Questions, concerns, thoughts?
Mr. Kelly, did you indicate me?
Yeah, Ms. Wellman, please. Can you hear?
I see you all looking and I, and the audio cut out a little bit, so I apologize. Thank you, Mrs. Reed, for coming to the selectmen this evening. I really appreciate you coming here. There is possibly nobody else in town other than staff that knows as much about affordable housing in this community than you and the folks in the Local Housing Partnership and the Housing Authority. I think that you've sculpted a very nice RFP here with town staff. And I think that it makes a very good opportunity for the Local Housing Partnership and for the community to leverage the funds that we have to do a good job and expand our affordable housing stocks, which I think is really, really important. There are some opportunities with NIMCOG for education, and I know that you've got some other projects in with them as well. So there's a lot going on. And I can imagine that there's, a consultant would be really helpful to streamline this process and work together with staff. So I look forward to the comments from Mrs. Stronach, who is working with your, with your committee. And again, I thank you for bringing this forward and all the work that you've put into it with our staff. Thank you.
Very good. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yeah, I was able to review the RFP when Ms. Stronach initially brought this forward. It was the, I believe, the overall consensus at the time that a very tight RFP was going to be required, kind of to help make sure we had some good outlines for what was going to be expected. I think we've achieved that in the scope of services here. It appears to be very comprehensive. The one question I had was, we have a, again, a very nice, tight scope of services, but what is, is there like an expected output from this? Is there a, a document or a benchmark that we are trying to hit or achieve with these services?
That's a, that's a great question. I think, I think it's something that will develop over time. Until we actually get a person on and see what we have available to us to do, then we can start to set some goals and some actual plans and, and get it rolling. We aren't always in control of everything that we're doing, so it's hard to actually set forth and say, we're going to do X, Y, and Z. There are a lot of moving parts. And so till we actually get a person, it's hard to put, put an exact number to what we want to do. I wish I had a better answer than that.
Nope, absolutely. And that's, again, that's normally why, why we go to consultants, no matter what the topic is. So that, that makes a lot of sense. I didn't know if there was something in mind as a desired end state. That is something I, I would hope would be one of a top priorities should this move forward. But this all makes sense and I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you. First, I would like to say that I very much enjoy working with the local partnership. And I have learned a tremendous amount. When I started this process, I knew very little. I might now be like a first grader compared to some of the expertise of the members that have been on the committee. And I would like to address Selectmen's Mackey's question, and because I think that the committee as a whole has kind of talked about the focus on the production of local affordable housing within the town. And I think our goal is to be able to produce units as well as a plan on how to better leverage the trust fund, is what I would say to Nancy's point. So while we don't have a specific number in mind, I think vision-wise, if we think of the two areas that the housing partnership is focused on, if we think about the production of the housing, obviously hitting our 10% with the new census coming online in September, and more importantly, leveraging the trust fund in a way that makes sense. And I think that that is well-defined in this RFP in terms of the scope of services under number one. Obviously, applying for grants would help us leverage it as well. And then number three, I think that those two areas speak to your question, Selectmen Mackey, but it is an excellent question and I am really looking forward to this. One thing that the committee was very clear on when we talked about getting a consultant was that we are not looking for somebody who is going to add work to the members of the town. Sometimes when you have a consultant come in, they're like, okay, assistant town manager and planning board, you should do this, this, and this. We're looking for somebody to actually work with us and to augment that so that we're able to maximize those opportunities and maximize the staff that we have that are working on other priorities. And it's basically helping us to manage this priority in a way that makes sense. I don't, I think that is what I have learned from the committee. And I very much think that, typical of Ms. Reed, she provided quite a plethora of information for us, including the acts in the chapter, which allows us to take these funds for this type of expenditure of the local housing partnership monies. So I think that this would be money well-spent and will give the town a big bang for their buck, as some would like to say. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome. How about Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just make the comment or offer the comment that I'm wholeheartedly in support of the concept and the proposal and getting or seeking the assistance of a consultant. So my question's going to focus more on money management. So we, we recognize that there's, you know, roughly $5 million or so dollars in the trust fund, which is a healthy balance, and developing a plan to utilize or leverage, to use Mrs. Stronach's terminology, those funds effectively and efficiently for the benefit of the community is a wise decision. But my two questions come around the $30,000 that is noted in the letter. So where did that number come from? And second to that is, would it not make sense to get the proposals before determining or having this board vote on an expenditure? Kind of take it in reverse order as opposed to authorizing a sum that I assume is an estimate but may not have a, you know, fine pencil on it. And I'm just curious where that number came from?
The number came from different discussions and some thoughts between myself, Mr. Sadwick, and Mr. Montori. It also, you know, was looked at by the committee as well. I was under the impression that you had to have money before you could put out an RFP.
Well, we have the money, we have the $5 million.
No, but you would have to have the money.
Well, that's my question.
This is a startup.
So, so we'll be asked if there's an appropriation for the project itself, especially when we, when we advertise for the project. There's always a contract amount that people in contract, and people who are going to bid on it like to know as least as in place. So the 30,000 really is just the budget itself. Each, you know, depending on what the consultant is asked to do, the projects they undertake at that point will have a more refined number on what their task, you know, what, you know, the cost of their tasks. It will also, to Mr. Mackey's point earlier, outline, you know, milestones, goals, and objectives, deliverables, things like that. But that's going to be based on the actual projects and work we want them to undertake. So this will just be an overall budgetary number set aside from the trust fund, almost like encumbering a PO for the projects. But the actual cost of the work, administration of the cost will, will be determined based project to project.
And if you wouldn't mind, I, I think that I actually may have added to that discussion because when we did the consulting for the reuse committee, I used the process that we used there where we came with this, where we approved a set amount. Maybe that was because it wasn't out of the housing fund and out of the local budget, so maybe it was different. And I may have clouded that as well in terms of thinking that we had to come up with a dollar figure when we were talking about it. So if I added to confusion, my apologies.
Let me just follow on that with one other question. The, the scope of services references that it would be a one-year contract renewable for another year at the town's election and could potentially go to three years in length. So is it reasonable? And I know you don't know the full magnitude of what would be proposed, but is, is 30,000 in your collective opinion the full value of what we're asking for? Or is it similar to what we've done at town meeting where we're, you know, doing a study for a school at $1 million and then asking later on for $30 million? Are we looking at 30,000 as a table setter and is going to be anticipation of further expense? Or do you think the 30,000 is, is what we need as we embark on it?
I mean, from my standpoint, the 30,000 would probably be the first year cost. I think, and you could spend it all in the first year, you could spend half of it. But I think, I think the board should anticipate, again, based on the workload that we put on this consultant, that there'd be more asks coming down. But we want to at least get what we think the first or the initial cost is going to be. But there will be more asks.
Yeah, thank you. And, and again, I want to emphasize that I think this is the right path, as I said in my opening comments. And the questions I'm asking is just, it really, in my opinion, it's about stewardship of the fund, right? So if we're stepping into something that we can anticipate might be, you know, 50 or 75, or, you know, maybe three times the cost of what we're talking about tonight, I think that's a line of sight that we ought to try to develop as opposed to we leave this meeting thinking we're going to spend 30,000 and then there's a, a second ask in a year or 15 months or something. So clearly, we have the funds to do it. Clearly, it's a good investment of resources, in my opinion. So I'm supportive of it. But I think clarity around that for the community's benefit is important. So thank you for answering those questions.
Good. First off, let's start with the people of the local housing partnerships. We have Nancy. Thank you very much. Melissa, Greg, Vinnie, Laura James, and our very own Ms. Stronach. So thank you very much. This was a lot of work and a lot of detail from this committee, so I thank you very much. And just to piggyback to Mr. Johnson's question to Mr. Montori, just because we, we may or may not approve, but I think which, which direction we're going, just for the residents... not approve, but I think which direction we're going, just for the residents, even if we approve, does this still go to October town meeting for the ultimate vote for the funds?
No, the funds are already in place and they're, can be spent with approval of the Board of Selectmen. So once you allocate or approve the $30,000, that money will be set aside and we'll have the, we'll move forward and we'll be able to spend it at the administration level.
Okay, very good. That's one of the few things that the select will can vote on. And I just think it's very responsible, the funds are there, and you guys did, like I said, so much homework. I always say Nancy has more knowledge or pinky than I do in my entire body when it comes to this stuff, so I thank you and the board very much. So I have no further questions. If the board has no further questions, what's the pleasure of the, Ms. Stronach?
No, I was just going to make a motion, and I wanted the public to know that I am on the Housing Partnership and can only be a voting member if they do not have a quorum, so I can't vote on this matter without conflict. So I just want to know that when we put that in place, that Selectman position in place, that is how we retooled it. So I know that Mr. Johnson will remember that, but that was intentional. And with that said, I will make a motion to approve the expenditure for a consultant at this time for $30,000.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Johnson. And we're going to do a roll call vote. We're going to find out if we can do a regular vote, but let's just do a roll call vote until we get confirmation. So why don't we start? Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Reed. Thank you, Nancy. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to residents. Brian, I can't see, do we have any residents on the line? Okay, we'll keep it open just for a little bit because I know sometimes there's a delay. And just for the residents, we have no one in person here. So why don't we just jump along to new business? It's new businesses, in-person meeting. This is our first one. I don't know, it's, any idea how long it's been? It's been forever and a day.
Two days.
But here we are.
Two days.
Perfect. So here we are with smiles. So very good. So Mr. Montori, I'm going to pass this one to you because I know there's been some folks, we have to be respectful, some folks are still concerned, and we kind of want to slow play it to have the hybrid meeting. So Mr. Montori, I'll kind of pass it to you. I know you've done a lot of work with yourself and the department head. So what's the latest?
So effective this week, we're back to in-person meetings following the open meeting law that boards are required to meet in person with the majority of the members of that committee being in person. And if those want, those who want to participate remotely will need to follow the town's remote participation policy, but a majority of the committee has to be in person. That's, that's a must. We sent out the plan to resume in-person meetings to all of the committees. The committees that are normally televised will continue to be televised as they were in the past. Those that weren't televised on cable will not be televised. We will provide in the future possible virtual components for those committees who want to, if they work it out with myself and the telemedia director, Brian Dorrington. The committees that have been televised in the past on cable television will have a virtual component for residents to participate in the meeting. It's not required by the open meeting law, but we're going to do it anyways. The Attorney General did send out guidance today that all communities should follow the open meeting law as they have in the past, follow the remote participation policies and guidance as they have in the past. The legislature has not passed any laws that will allow for virtual meetings to continue, so no one should do so. They should revert back to the open meeting law as they did prior to COVID, which we are doing. So we're back to, back to meetings at the town hall. They'll be in this room and the small meeting room on the first floor. The library obviously is available for meetings if that, if they are scheduled through the library director, Council on Aging for daytime meetings and meetings that are unique and need to be in the evening that are scheduled through the director at the senior center. And obviously, the schools have available space for meetings, and the school committee will meet at the high school in person as they have in the past. So we're moving back to as normal as possible for public meetings. And so far, tonight is, is going well. Planning Board met in person last night, but because the, the state of emergency wasn't lifted until today, they still had some social distancing, it was a little different than I'm meeting tonight, but so far, Rouse is going well.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. Let's open up to the board for questions. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, I appreciate all the work that the manager and staff have put into making this work. It was unintentional that I was going to be remote for this. I am on vacation, it was planned, and didn't know when this would all kind of come together. So I'm glad that we're keeping a remote component available for folks to attend who need to or who, or who wish to, and we'll see how this evolves. But I think that the staff, Mr. Dorrington, and, and Mr. Montori, and everybody involved have just done a really great job of trying to bring this together. So I appreciate that, and I thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a great plan. I'm glad to see that we'll be returning to in-person. I would like to apologize and thank everyone for their flexibility. I too did not know when we would be returning and am wrapping up my final commitment with the military prior to my retirement. So I'm looking forward to getting back in person, and I think this plan is great, and I want to thank Mr. Montori and all the staff who put in the work on this. Thank you.
Very good, very good. And thank you and congratulate, well, we'll congratulate when you retire, but very good. Thank you, Mr. Mackey, very much for your service. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you so much. So great to see us, the community, in gray as we enter into in-person meetings, so I'm happy to see that. I'd just like to, again, as everyone said, thank everybody for all their work throughout this COVID. It has been an amazing year plus, and I think that we all have risen to the challenge, Mr. Chairman, and I am too, looking forward to these in-person meetings. But more importantly, I am appreciative of the town manager, along with the telemedia department's efforts to make sure that our residents who are unable to potentially attend in person will be able to do so in some way, shape, or form. So it's great stuff. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Johnson?
Not much to add to the positive comments of my colleagues. The only comment or observation I will make is that it wasn't that long ago here in Tuxbury that I don't know that we could have had a well-televised meeting, let alone get through a year and a half of virtual reality. So that doesn't happen by accident, right? Our community and the leadership of the town and municipal government came together with the support of taxpayers to fund, enterprise fund, to make sure we have the equipment and resources that allow for what we just lived through. And I just ask everyone to pause for a moment because had we not done that, life would have been quite different for the last year and a half, and a little bit more challenging. So kudos to those who had the foresight to make that a reality, and kudos to those who supported that effort because it's another lesson, and you have to be thinking ahead all the time. And we can't sit back and just accept the status quo. We have to continue to find ways to improve, and this is yet another good example of that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Short and sweet, again, would love, would love to thank the telemedia department for all your hard work and all your scheduling. We see what goes on behind the scenes, and it's a big, big, big effort, and the team has been tremendous. Outside of that, it just feels so good. It feels like we have energy in the room, and it's just, it still feels weird in a very, very good way. So again, that's all, big thanks to the telemedia and staff. So that's really all I had. So if there's nothing else, I don't think any votes required, because more, just for awareness and FYI, correct?
Correct.
All right, very good. Want to move to the next new business item is declaring, due Pride Month, discussion and adoption. And I put this on the agenda per Ms. Wellman. So Ms. Wellman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I sent a draft proclamation to the board last week for their consideration with this agenda item. It's in our packets. June is, is Pride Month due to activities and a riot that happened at Stonewall many decades ago. I wanted to give the board an opportunity to adopt this proclamation. We've done a number of other proclamations over the course of the years, and I thought this one was inclusive and is, is a well-balanced, is written in a balanced way and would be a very progressive, open, and inclusive thing for this board to adopt. But I wanted to bring it up. I can read it into the record or whatever the pleasure of the board is.
I'll open up the board. Questions? Thoughts to proceed? Ms. Stronach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly support Pride Month and am very appreciative of you bringing this forward for us. I am not sure, my recollection of proclamations are to individuals for service. I don't think that we have done a proclamation for a group. I think about the last proclamation that came before us, which was for the police department. And I remember getting a few phone calls, being criticized for not supporting that. It's not that I don't support the idea of it, I just think that we are better off acknowledging it. I'm happy to put something into the minutes, acknowledging Pride Month, but I am not comfortable taking on a proclamation because I think that the, the requests for proclamations could become vast and wide, and I would feel less comfortable. I would prefer to put something in the minutes, recognizing that it is Pride Month, and that I am happy to support that as an individual.
How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, my, my question is, what, what does this proclamation achieve? What's the, what are the effects of moving forward with this proclamation?
I'm not really clear on what your question is. A proclamation is a statement of the board as representatives of the community in this case that would show support for all the members of our LGBTQ community in their importance and in the contributions that they do, they give to our town. Other proclamations and recognitions that we've done have included police dispatchers. We've done Indian Independence Day, Indian Democracy. We've done a number of them over the years, so I'm kind of, I'm not sure really what the difference is for putting something like this in the minutes versus adopting it.
Thank you. Yeah, and absolutely, I want to state that I am in full support of our LGBTQ community, and I commend your work with kind of spearheading the DEI committee. I was just unclear on what the effects were, if there was any actions that are caused by us adopting this, or kind of what next steps are. It's a personal belief of mine that as, as government, we should kind of limit our involvement in, in these types of things. But if, if there are no additional actions or requirements or kind of effects on the backend of approval of this, then I have no further questions.
Yeah, just to speak to that, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Some other communities, many other communities do other kinds of things, like flag raisings, for instance. But I think this board in the past has a, has a track record of not doing flag raisings and other attendant items for a variety of reasons. But, so this is just, this doesn't include any particular other action other than just the language here. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. How about Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to follow on some of the comments of my colleagues, and before I offer my own view, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to actually hear yours because my takeaway so far, I have conflicting information. Having been away from the board for a couple of years, it sounds to me from Ms. Stronach's commentary that the board has approached proclamations in a way that was somewhat restrictive, and I don't recall that when I served previously. So I want to know a little bit more about what's occurred in the last couple of years, if there's a policy in place or something that this board has set as precedent. But that has to be squared with Ms. Wellman's commentary where some other proclamations apparently have been issued. So I'm a little confused.
Yep.
And I'd like some guidance. So before I offer further comments, if, I don't know if, as, you know, out of respect for the three of you who've been here for the last couple of years, I'd like to hear kind of the collective thought of the existing, you know, pre-existing board members.
Sure. I think, I don't know if this ties directly into the, the request to raise a flag and/or a proclamation, but I can definitely recall, and listen, I could be off base. I know we had the request of the Armenian Independence Day and the request of the India, the country, and as well as Ms. Stronach mentioned, supporting the blue. And for all those, my recollection was, you know, the board historically would recognize that, but not quote unquote, you know, approve a proclamation. So we recognized it to Ms. Stronach's point and entered in the records acknowledging that. And maybe I'll, Mr. Montori, keep me honest, because I want to be accurate, but again, I'm just off the cuff. Typically, historically, how would the board handle this? Those three examples, I think, are somewhat similar. They don't have to be exactly with the proclamation, but am I somewhat accurate?
I think you are, yeah, based on my recollection of those.
Okay. So Mr. Johnson, does that help?
I guess what it leads me to is I'm still confused, so I think we need to develop some clarity. So regardless of the question on the table, the takeaway in my view would be we should build a policy, right? And it's not something to do this evening, but we should build a policy that speaks to this issue in general. Because I think, I think this in the, a long time ago, this was not considered a big deal. But as time has progressed, there's the potential for this to be more and more frequent, and things have changed in our society across the board, so there's a need to think about how does that affect the entire community.
I think you're spot on. You just hit the nail on the head. We got the guy to the left there, and we could almost interrupt this and make a motion. And I see kind of, Mr. Johnson, to the line of your thinking around, we do, again, historically, we got some requests for raising a flag. And remember, we have the beautiful United States of America flag, the Commonwealth flag, and the POW and MIA flag just simply put, you know, in town center, and we will not take those down in any way, shape, or form. So that's number one. And number two, I think maybe about proclamations, how we handle it. So kind of like borrowing your thought process, maybe just redirect it or seek a motion for Mr. Montori to kind of put together maybe a policy around those two. I think there's some linkage, but maybe two separate policies so we can kind of just say, hey, this is how the board typically handles these requests, and there's no gray area, and we don't take sides for, for one group or one organization or one, you know, that's all. So I'll, I'll pause there and see. So I'll pause there and see, you know, just seek the direction of the board.
Well, I'd be supportive of that because I think, I think that would be instructive. Just listening to some of the comments, there seems to be, you know, a little bit of conflicting information or facts that I think we, as a board, can clear up moving forward. It doesn't change history, doesn't change the requests in front of us tonight.
Sure.
I think moving forward, it would benefit this board and our community to have that clarity. So if you're asking for a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion that we seek the assistance of the town manager at first pass to work with this board to construct a policy for the board relative to the issuance of proclamations. And I'll tag on, as I heard you say, the context of other methods of expression like flag raising and any other symbolism associated with expression of belief or other ideas.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Again, let's do a roll call vote because we're virtual. So Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So just to circle back around to the order of new business. So Mr. Johnson, thank you very much. You know, I know we kind of jumped in front of it, but I think that was very wise on your part and our part. So I thank you for that, Mr. Johnson. Anything else, Mr. Johnson, on your side?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay. And I'll just keep it short, simple. And again, this is just individual, I would just, I would almost echo all the other comments. But I say this, you know, I am not a king or a queen. I'm just a simple resident that tries to do right by 30,000 residents. So I just, for me, I just, again, don't believe in the proclamation thing. I don't think we have to do a proclamation to believe in something and to support something regardless of race, color, creed, religion, age, and I could go on and on and on. So I don't, again, I just want to share. Again, that's just my personal belief. So I'm very happy with the board said. I think it will kind of help with some of the gray areas, but I do commend Ms. Wellman for bringing it forward because that's what we're supposed to do, is have these discussions. So I thank you very much, Ms. Wellman. So without further ado, what's the pleasure of the board? To take action or no action? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add that part of the reason we, I put this proclamation forward for discussion, and this kind of discussion, I think, is productive vis a vis what we want to do with proclamations and so forth in general, is because while I agree with you that we shouldn't necessarily have to specially recognize different groups, we also have to recognize that there is, the folks in different groups experience discrimination. And it happens in Tuxbury just like it happens anywhere else. And so when a community and when leadership steps forward and says, we support all of the people in our community, and right now, we're going to say we're supporting these people, that it sends a message of inclusion and it sends the message that we want it to be everybody's equal. And that's what this proclamation starts with. So in light of the conversation, I would just request that this board consider putting this proclamation forward in the minutes and reflecting that we recognize that June is Pride Month.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Wellman. So I think that's the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, that missed.
I have a second by Mr. Johnson. Roll call vote. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Again, thank you very much, Ms. Wellman, for bringing in very healthy discussion. That's what we're supposed to do as a board. So thanks again very much. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman.
Okay, and we're going to turn to last order of new businesses, Town Manager Compensation. So again, maybe just a quick, very, very quick history lesson here. So this year was a very significant year, even during COVID, the board as well as Mr. Montori ironed out, Mr. Montori, how many contracts for our particular unions because it was, the third year expired. So this is where we roll up our sleeves and negotiate the contracts and get it done. And typically, historically, that is when the board will meet an executive session and also, oh, by the way, by law, legally, per our bylaw, we discuss Mr. Montori's contract and his salary compensations as well. So Mr. Montori, how many contracts did we iron out this year on your behalf?
Four.
Four contracts. So when we ironed out all the contracts, we took a vote at town meeting back in May, and then and only then that we, again, revisit Mr. Montori's, because that's his style, is he's very unselfish. Why should we negotiate Mr. Montori's contract where, when negotiation, all the folks that work, you know, all the hard folks that work in the town? So anyways, that's historically what we do. And so we met back in March. So first and foremost, back in June, this is going back a little bit, June 17th, what we did is we extended Mr. Montori's contract to three years, and that's historically how long we extended his contract. So his contract currently right now extends from January 17th, 2001, which was this year, through January 17th, 2024. So Mr. Montori currently has a three-year contract. And then again, every year, we're obligated to discuss compensation, what we may or not do for Mr. Montori, and through executive session. I believe it was, I believe it was back in March, if I'm not mistaken, because the contract, I think, believe in March, is that right, Mr. Montori?
I think it started in March.
Started in March, we had those conversations. And what the board came up with, you know, through the board's conversation, and it was a unanimous 5-0 vote, was to increase Mr. Montori's contract for one year. All we do it in one-year intervals, you know, so starting July 1, 2021, an increase of 2.25% for Mr. Montori's contract. So that's the history lesson, and that's kind of sharing what the residents, what the board is obligated to do and what typically we do. So now, what I'd like to do is kind of pause because there was a request of each board member to say, you know something? We had significant meetings, number one, about Mr. Montori, his performance, what he does. Number two, we had significant conversations about his increase this calendar year. So I'm going to pause there. And what I'd like to do quickly is, again, let's just do a roundtable. We can offer comments, or you may not want to offer comments. And again, this was more for highlighting to the residents as opposed to quote unquote taking a vote, because again, the votes were already completed. So Ms. Wellman, would you like to offer any comments to the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, please.
If I may, just before Ms. Wellman speaks, it's my understanding that the pre-April board did a review, right, already? So we're not offering review comments this evening, right?
Correct, yeah. We did the review every year.
I'm not prepared to do that. I didn't come to the meeting prepared to do that.
Snippets, snippets and soundbites. Snippets and soundbites.
I just want to make sure.
Make it nice and easy, though. Good call, Mr.
Already accomplished that task.
Yep, good, good, good call, Mr. Johnson. Okay, so, yep. Ms. Wellman, who's yours?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for making that clarification. I'll keep my comments brief. I would concur. And over the course of the last 18 months, working with Mr. Montori as we've gone through this pandemic, and the leadership and the steady hand that he has shown and that he's worked with his staff have just been incredible. I have felt safer living in Tuxbury than some of our other communities. And I think some of that is relates directly to his leadership and management of the community. There are so many other things that a manager does, and we talk about them all the time. And his, I think his salary is commensurate and is apropos to his position professionally and within the community. And I offer those as my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being the junior member on the board and having the least amount of time working with Mr. Montori, it has still been abundantly clear to me in that short time how much work has been done. And with the history that I've been educated on and the kind of previous taskings that were accomplished prior to my appointment, I would like to echo Ms. Wellman's comments that I believe that this raise is not only well-earned, but is commensurate with the effort being done. I would also like to give kudos for kind of being the last to be closed out while we worked through all the other contracts. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Ms. Stronach?
Thank you. And I am so glad you said that because I was going to say, I did speak to Mr. Montori's worth ethic during my review of him. What I would say to his salary compensation and his contract is that I believe that the town of Tuxbury is blessed to have a town manager of Mr. Montori's caliber, and more importantly, blessed to have someone who does not take advantage of us financially and has always put himself in a position where he is looking out for his workforce before he looks out for himself. And if I recollect correctly, in the past, Mr. Montori would not even budget himself for a salary increase, and we had to go back and do some adjustments. And we have since then had to make sure that he does that because if we don't, he will just say, okay, well, they didn't say anything, so. And I just appreciate the fact that he is not only fiscally responsible, at the same time he values and shows value to our employees, but he carries that to himself. And I think that says a lot for us as a town. And I want to thank him and my fellow board members for moving through this so quickly.
Thank you, Ms. Stronach. How about Mr. Johnson?
Okay, I'll save my review for next year. But one of the things that I think is important, and the reason this is on the agenda this evening, is that this board in Mr. Montori's tenure as town manager has repeatedly strived to have an open and transparent information stream for the public. And that has not always been the case here and in other towns relative to the top employed professional in our community. So what I think, and hopefully residents did hear from Selectman and Chairman Kelly's remarks, is that there's a salary adjustment for the town manager of 2.25%, and that is not one penny less than our workforce received, nor is it one penny more. So it is reflective of what we were instructed by town meeting and supported by town meeting to execute for the entire workforce in Tuxbury, with the one exception of, I believe, our teachers who are still without a contract. But all other town unions on the town department side agreed to that sum, and town meeting supported that. So as has been stated, the process by contract, because this is not a collective bargaining situation, by contract, we have built in the provisions to have different points in time to do a review, to do a compensation discussion, and it culminates with our reporting as a board to the community as to what that step is for the next 12 months. So I think that's important in context. And the only thing I'll add is that if you look around and you read the papers, you follow the news, you'll see and you'll appreciate that the ranks of professional municipal management are thinning. And to have quality, professional, ethical leadership is central to a well-run community. When you think about it, we're $120 million rough budget. We have, I don't even know how many hundred employees and all kinds of obligations to meet daily for our residents. So we have to have strong and professional management. And I would not want to be in the position right now to have to find somebody as qualified as Mr. Montori. So I think that 2.25% certainly is well-earned. I'm not sure that it necessarily reflects the return on investment in that context, but it's absolutely deserved, and I am wholeheartedly in support.
Very good. I'll consider that a half a review, Mr. Johnson. That's fine. Okay, very good. Thank you for the commentary. Short, sweet here, so echo all of the board's comments through Mr. Montori. I always say, I talk to Mr. Montori more than my wife. It's almost an exaggeration, but it's not an exaggeration. And listen, you know, we give Mr. Montori a lot of praise, and rightfully so, but I can honestly say, behind the scenes, we often sometimes do lock horns. That's our job, is to lock horns, especially on the budget. And we drive each other, and we have very professional conversations. We might not always agree, but at the end of the day, his character and level of professionalism, it's okay. It's okay. I always say, can argue with my wife, two minutes later, I love her, and that's okay. And that's what we do with Mr. Montori. So I think it's important also to know to be very honest with the residents, where that's our job. But I can't thank you enough. You know, like I said, over this last year, you saw a lot of communities shut down, literally. And Mr. Montori, he runs a tight ship, kept it going. I'm not going to list all the accomplishments during one of the toughest years we'll ever go through. And again, it's very commendable, admirable, I could use a lot of big words, but I thank him. So I'll pause there. I think that's on. Mr. Montori, I know you kind of like, you hate this type of stuff, but I'm going to put you on the spot. Anything that you'd like to close on?
No, just want to thank the board for approving the compensation. I appreciate it very much, and I just, as always, appreciate being the town manager of this community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Montori. All right. Speaking of which, Mr. Montori, I'm going to pass it right back to you. The floor is yours.
Okay, the only thing I have is a town council invoice in the amount of $5,397.50 covering May 1, 2021 through May 15, 2021. And I'd ask, and I'd recommend approval.
I'll make a motion to approve, as recommended by the town manager, the town council invoice for May 1 through May 15, 2021.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
You do, second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Roll call vote. Ms. Wellman, how do you vote? I'll take that as a yes. Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
All right, there's two ayes. Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Anything else on your side, Mr. Montori?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Next minutes, we got some minutes.
We got some minutes. Again, I want to thank the board for their patience as we work through the transition. I am aware that we still have a transition period after the September 29th, and we are working on that. But with that said, I would like to do this in a group. I'd like to do the regular session minutes first for September 29th, December 1st, December 15th, January 19th, and February 11th, all regular session meetings as presented. I make that in the form of a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Okay, by Ms. Wellman. I know, I don't know if this might be confusing because some folks are on the board. But anyway, so I have a motion, a second. So let's just simply do a roll call vote. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Abstained.
Okay. Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstained.
And the chair votes aye as well, so that's motion 302 it carries. Ms. Stronach, what else you got?
The next one that I would like to, I will split into, again, one group, if that's okay with you. These are the executive session minutes for January 19th, January 26th, February 4th, February 18th, February 24th, March 4th, and March 11th. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman, roll call vote. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Abstained.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye.
Abstained.
Chair votes aye as well. It's 302. What else you got?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much. This is the board member report. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really briefly, this evening, I wanted to recognize that our, actually, two things. I wanted to recognize our school committee, and our school department, and the staff at the Tuxbury Memorial High School for the excellent job they did with not only graduation, but the graduation events, all the work the student council has done to bring off just a really special series of events. I know lots of kids got to participate in most, if not all, the events, and it was just very well executed, and I appreciate all the work that went into that. Secondly, with our DEI interviews completed, I think we did 14 interviews, we were really very blessed with a tremendous cadre of candidates for the position on the DEI. We have, I believe, seven positions. And so I wanted to ask the board to think about it without making any decisions tonight, if we want to amend the structure of the committee, to expand it in any way, either by, you know, adding voting members, adding associate members, or in any other manner that would be apropos, to see if we can include some more of the candidates that we had. And so I give that to the board for thought and discussion, and we can bring that up again as a future agenda item before we appoint to that committee. But, and once again, thanks to all of the people who put in their applications and interviewed with this board. We are, I was just really impressed with the caliber of our candidates. So thank you.
Well said, yeah. Spot on and well said. Very good. How about Mr. Maggie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having been out of the loop for the past two weeks, wrapping up this, my final engagement, I have no new updates for the board. Thank you.
All right. How about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you very much. The elementary building committee met last Thursday, June 10. Our next meeting will be July 8, and which may include a site visit. So we're looking forward to that. The project is coming along very, very well, and I want to thank the project manager, as well as the town manager, who will be working with some of the butters of that project with, to address some of their concerns. So I want to thank them in advance for the work on that. The events committee will be meeting on June 24, getting ready for the event in September down at Livingston. And the local housing partnership is meeting on June 28, which is next Monday. And I just want to say that while this big room and the smaller conference room, we meet downstairs in the town hall, so that room's available as well, if needed. And similar to Selectman Wellman, I would like to extend my congratulations to the graduates from across Tuxbury, not just Tuxbury High School, but all of our graduates, no matter where they go to school, and remind everybody that I believe it was today was the last day of school here in town, or tomorrow, thank you. And please be extra careful now that everybody's out and about. We're going to have a lot of activities moving around, so be extra careful driving around. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. How about Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I have nothing to offer this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, I just have one thing, Ms. Wellman nailed it, Ms. Stronach. Too many people to thank, but as far as the graduation for the Tuxbury High, that was wonderful. Just wonderful, wonderful, wonderful stuff, beautiful night. So they nailed it. Too many people to thank, but I would ask, on behalf of the board, through Mr. Montori, through Mr. Malone, that we do give a big thank you there. That was no easy task in lieu of, you know, everything that transpired. So thank you very much for bringing that up. And that's all I had. So without further ado, I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Final roll call of the vote, I promise. Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Maggie?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, everybody.